Well, we're there. If not, we'll move on down to... Oh, they'll catch up with me. I didn't...I meant to give them 15 seconds, but I didn't, but they'll catch up to me. Go down, I guess, to eight?
First of all, seven, we have a spotlight Thursday night on service learning at Slaughter West. Also, Thursday night, Mr. Odom is going to update the board and also the public on how our schools performed on the 2009 state report card. Now, old business. I know last board meeting, we decided we want to talk a little about McFadden School of Excellence, the admission policy. Ms. Barnes, you want to kind of give a quick summary of the current admission policy?
Just to recap on what McFadden does at this time, they assess the number of available slots at each grade level. They accept applications. As they come in for all of those available slots, they screen all the students in kindergarten through grades two, and they use Taranova scores for those entering three through five, since we'll stop at that point now. And then, based on the number of available openings and the eligible students, based on the screenings and information, they place siblings first, and they place students that reside in the county, and then if available slots are still there, they fill with students who reside in the city limits.
So if the sibling is a city resident...
They get the slot.
They have priority over the county?
Correct. And then they maintain a waiting list at each grade level in that order, siblings, county, city, as slots become available.
Wayne?
Do we have a track record over the last three or four years? Right now, we're almost 50-50. Has it been consistent like that over the years?
To the best of my recollection, yes, sir. The years that I was there, we started out primarily county, but then those city numbers grew, and it's always been a heavy number of city in the program.
I'd say the sibling rule...
Sibling made a big difference in that, correct?
What kind of...Ms. Barnes, just out of curiosity, how many people were typically on the waiting list per grade?
On the grade level, Mr. Gill, kindergarten, you usually had about 20 or 25 on the waiting list. First and second, you always had a pretty large waiting list.
Bigger than 25?
20, 25 was about the highest we had. Fourth grade, because you were able to take 10 new students, because the number jumped from 20 to 25, you were able to fill a lot of slots, so the waiting list was a little bit smaller at that grade. Seventh grade, it picked up again. Of course, that's not going to be an issue now, so...
We are going to be expanded by one grade, all K-5 spots. So you're instantly increasing 20 K through three spots and also 25, fourth and fifth.
Correct.
Terry?
I'm going...I guess we'll vote on it Thursday night, but I'm going to still go back to what I said before. Having that stipulation in there shouldn't even been in the first place. Like I said, city residents, the Mercer, they're all county residents, so I don't know how you can sit there and pick that one group out. I don't know how you ever got by with it.
I kind of thought the difference was that if a child went, you know, K-5 or K-6 through the city system, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but the taxes paid always went to the city system for that child. If they went...am I correct with that? I mean, state money follows them.
The taxes, the possibly years lag because of broke, tend to follow the child.
So in retrospect, if a city kid went to McFadden, we'd get the dollars?
Right, but it'd be a year's lag on it, too.
But if he went there, we'd share one more student worth of taxation with the city.
But I mean, the point is that the taxes, the county taxes they have paid have not gone to the county. They've followed the child to the city. Is that not correct?
Because the county's taxes are shared, depending on the weighted average.
Membership?
APM is used for one thing still at the state, but I think we're saying this...I think the three of us are saying the same thing, just in different ways. But the taxes, other than...when the year we open a school, or the year the city opens a school, you'll see some variation, because it'll throw the student rope off a bit. But generally, the county taxes, the overall taxes that all Rutherford County residents pay will follow the child in whichever system he or she is in.
But the statement that you say, well, I pay city and county taxes both, is not exactly true, because county people pay some city taxes, too, because they pay that back. So, I mean, that's not said in that manner, but it's true. We do pay for those students, too, so it's a balance there.
The tax argument is complicated, but you're not paying two sets of property taxes like city, market, or...I mean, you might be paying to Smyrna, but I'm...but not in the sense of supporting a system.
Correct, correct.
You know, I think just leave the tax out of it. I mean, although, you know, property taxes not necessarily shared, I don't think, is it? And that's...the sharing is on sales taxes, right?
Sharing is also on the county property tax.
Even that paid by city residents?
Yes.
Okay.
The city property tax, that is entirely to the city.
I just think we're sort of strained from the main point, which is the point of equity. And I think we're probably all sick of this argument. I don't know.
It's not a new argument. It's an age-old argument. Two systems, both systems trying to provide an accelerated program for their students. We did this, the city...I guess they're...I'm not sure which came first, the city magnet program or the county magnet program, but here, the county is trying to establish for its system a magnet program. Used McFadden and used Thurman Francis. The only time we've made seats available to someone outside of our system, is outside of the county system, is when we didn't fill all the seats. We didn't fill the seats. There weren't enough children from the county program that wanted to go here, so we opened up those seats to others that live within the county, which then becomes the city resident. The city has done the same thing in a reverse manner. When they opened Scale School, they had some few empty chairs, so they welcomed some children outside the corporate limits into the Scale School. I don't know if they still do that, but this is not an unprecedented thing that we're doing within the county or area.
What they do is, if you want to go to a city school, and you're a county resident, you put your name on a waiting list, and if they don't fill those with city residents, then they will give you...they will allow you into the school. They at one time charged $200 or $300, $500, Jeff says. They no longer charge that, but the city kids do get priority.
But isn't that exactly what we're doing? It's the same thing that we're doing in the opposite, right?
Yeah, but I guess you could...going back, I mean, we're not paying city taxes. I mean, you could certainly use it for that argument, but that's the way they do business.
But we do pay city taxes, too. Every time we buy something in the city, we buy a lot of stuff in the city, so I don't know. It's just an argument we probably don't need to argue about. We probably just try to need to try to make it work.
We've got two different systems, each trying to provide a service for its constituents. And we happen to be on the county school board, which is charged with responsibility of the functioning of the county school system.
You also represent residents of the city, too?
Yes, I do.
I mean, that's...
I do, you do.
I'm well aware of it, and that's what I'm looking at. But where I'm going back to is back nine years ago, whenever this thing was set up, if I'm not mistaken, McFadden has been around a whole lot longer than the cities.
I don't know.
I think I know what I'm talking about on that, but what I'm saying is not right.
What I'm not sure is fair is that a county student and county citizens had no input on the city developing their own system. And I wouldn't think it would be fair for a child, you know, 15 to 18 miles, you know, on the edge of the county, to get knocked out by a city student who only has to drive two or three miles either to their magnet program or ours. So I would hate to see a county child knocked out of that program, because they don't really have a choice, and the city child does.
Except they do have a choice. We've already talked about Discovery School lets anybody in who meets the criteria. And they're still going to be that far away from the McFadden or Discovery School. I mean, we can talk about shared taxes and all that all we want, but the folks out there who live in the city say, I pay two sets of taxes. I pay at the same rate as anybody else in the county, and yet I'm denied equal access to McFadden. And they don't think it's right. And I don't agree with it.
But wait...and I don't want to belabor the issue, but there's a lot of county people out there that think just the opposite. And, you know, the thing is, we need to represent all the people, and we need to do our best that we can to do that, and I think we do. I mean, when you look at...maybe we hadn't done it exactly right in some people in the city's eyes, but there's still 50% of those students out there that are city students, so somehow or another, they did get in. So...Barnes, do you have anything to say about that?
Well, I expressed my opinion last time we talked about it, and that is, when I asked if the school, Discovery School, offered the county kids free access, and if they qualified, there was no distinction in the...if they tested number three, then they were the third child to get in, as long as the city operates under that criteria. I feel fairly comfortable with saying we can operate that way, too. So I don't...this tax issue, I don't buy into that, but I do buy into the idea that if they're going to let any child go based upon their ability, and that's where they're going to rank, then I feel comfortable saying that we would let anyone go. Because if that child comes from Christianity, and he's third on the list at the Discovery School, then he's going to get in, and someone in the city might not get in.
Just out of...just for clarification, do you, Don, or Ms. Barnes, so the Discovery School, if a county resident wants in?
When I called the city, they reported to me that they screened all the students that applied, and then they ranked the students from highest to lowest based on their score, and that's how they accepted students into their program, was about the score ranking, and they did not consider city versus county in that. So they just took them by rank.
Do you know how many county kids go to the Discovery School?
Very small percentage, is what I understand.
But like Mr. Journeykin said, they have equal opportunity to get in.
That's what she reported to me when I asked, that they strictly accepted by the ranking regardless of city and county.
If that's the case, you know...
I want to make...I want to confirm that, okay? Again, through another phone call tomorrow, just to make sure that's the way it is.
Any other discussion on that?
Let's go on, Gil.
Okay, B. Central Magnet School Eligibility Participate in Athletics. I think the last board meeting we had, you probably read a letter I wrote to TWAA. Bernard Childers called me. He's the head of TWAA. We are on the December the 9th Legislative Council Agenda to plead our case requesting that any kid, for example, that enters a magnet school and wants to participate in football, wrestling, which are the two sports that we won't offer there, be allowed to participate in their zone, in their zone school in those two sports, which is what I think the entire board would like to see happen. I don't know if we're going to be able to pull it off or not, but we're on the December the 9th Agenda.
You're a Hall of Fame member, I'm sure they'll...
There you go.
Grant?
But they haven't ever acted upon that type of request before, out of my understanding. Is that correct?
I don't know. I'm not sure.
I don't think there's a precedent.
Dr. Ash is saying, no, they hadn't.
Sometime they were looking to plow new ground, you know, but...
Do you...do...Dr. Ash, do you or Ms. Cloud know, I mean, are they in a position that day that they could amend that rule? She goes, we're about to start collecting applications and all that, and people need to know.
I just don't see why they wouldn't, but, you know, maybe they've got a reason.
I don't know.
Any other questions on that discussion?
C. Riverdale High School Synthetic Turf. This is the information only. The board previously allowed Riverdale High School and Livingston Consulting to develop and implement fundraising and financing efforts to purchase and install an outdoor synthetic turf football soccer field. Fundraising efforts have been underway, and Livingston Consulting has secured a five-year interest-free loan from Wilson Bank and Trust for the purposes of building an outdoor synthetic football field at Riverdale High School. Funds will be generated through the school's booster clubs, businesses, and private facilities, and there will be no cost to the board. The loan agreement is similar to the loan secured for the construction of the Oakland High School indoor athletic facility.
Wayne?
I thought that there was some kind of statute that the legislature passed that prohibited this. I mean, it's a great idea, and I'd love to see it happen, but I just thought there was something passed that impeded that opportunity in the future.
Not to my knowledge. See, we're not in...
I must have gotten confused.
They should know.
Well, I mean, these two should know, from our perspective. I mean, it's comparable to the same arrangement we did at Oakland. Identical, yeah.
There's nothing that we're aware of that has happened. I know I spoke with you, Wilson Bank, about that. We looked into it and didn't find anything that has happened, so...yeah, we're good to go.
Terry? I'm sorry, Terry. Go ahead.
All I was going to do, since they were here, I was going to basically just ask them if they had anything to say, or any board members, any questions?
I will come up and say one thing real quick. I just want to make one clarification that the notes are on there.
Do we have to suspend the rules for that, Joyce, or is it all right just to let him? Okay, okay.
Says we have absolutely secured the five-year interest-free loan from Wilson Bank. It's not as absolutely done yet. That part of it's not exactly absolutely done, but we expect something to be done within the next week and a half to two weeks and have finalized. As far as having the individual back to back it and do all that and having everything else finished, but within two weeks, we'll have the actual structure of Wilson Bank, and it's not...it'll be a good deal. It'll be good for Riverdale. So I just wanted to make that one little clarification, because that makes it sound like it's absolutely secured, and until I have a signed document in my hand, it's not done, and I don't have that signed document yet. That's the only one I don't have, but we'll have it done in a week or so.
Okay. Thank you.
But I asked Angel, I mean, there's language in the agreement that would preclude us from ever being financially responsible as a board, isn't there?
That's correct.
Yeah.
It's guaranteed by private individuals. There is no exception between us and the bank. We're not in any way financially responsible.
Yeah, the school's not...the school or the board wouldn't be hooked to it in any way, shape, or form, so...
Any other discussion?
And I wasn't bringing that up for opposition. I just thought I remembered something, so...
Well, I looked into it after you and I spoke that day, because I was a little concerned about it, because I even knew that far back that we were kind of...this thing's been working for well over a year or so now, and I had researched it and hadn't found anything.
Right.
So I had felt pretty comfortable with it.
But you know, and I'm sure there'll be a lot of people out there that think that we could better spend our money, but I would say this. They don't have to deal with all the phone calls from the soccer clubs, the boys' and girls' soccer teams. The eighth grade football team want to know why they can't use the field, you know, why the field's in such poor condition, you know, how are we going to maintain the field, how are we going to afford water in other fields? I mean, this thing really excludes a lot of those issues that we've had to deal with. I'm excited about doing it. I think in the long haul, with what we pay for irrigation, with the grief we deal with from various clubs, more people will get to use it. It's going to be a good thing for Riverdale.
It will be. I mean, you know, Oakland dumped, what, 250 tons of sand on their field this year and had to re-saw the entire center of their field, and I don't know what that cost. It had to be, you know, $10,000, $12,000, $15,000, and you go out there today, and that's money that with all the rain we had, we'll have to do it again, you know, next year. So it's money that's pretty much gone at this point, so it has its place, so...
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Gil. Ten facilities?
Ten facilities. A Rutherford County Schools Tennis Complex change order. Same construction company has completed the Rutherford County Tennis Complex. They have submitted a deductive change order in the amount of $22,766.50 for credits taken during the construction of the Rutherford County Schools Tennis Complex. This would change the contract amount from $1,600,491 to $1,577,714.50, and we're obviously going to recommend that.
Okay, any questions?
Eagleville High School Greenhouse. Eagleville High School Principal Rhonda Holton has requested permission to purchase a used greenhouse that will be disassembled, moved, and reassembled on the school property by the Eagleville FFA alumni. Greenhouse is 40 feet wide by 70 feet long, and will be placed adjacent to the existing greenhouse. The greenhouse will be purchased and reassembled at no cost to the Rutherford County School Board, and we recommend that you approve the purchase construction of a 40 by 70 used greenhouse by Eagleville School at no cost to the board.
Questions, comments? Go ahead, Doc.
Is this the same size as the existing greenhouse?
Mr. Clardy, you know?
It's a little bit larger, actually, except it's two bays, and it's an arched roof with a common gutter down between the two.
Grant?
I was going to ask, Mr. Clardy, will you be supervising or at least in some way overseeing some of the construction? Of course, sometime when you have stuff taken down, you have some, maybe some defects in the...that are taken down, it would cause some structural problems, you know?
One of my project managers, Jackie, told us that we're laying the building out and then checking on it regularly.
Yeah, we talked about...I'm sorry, Mr. Journeykin. Pardon me.
How about the utilities for the operation of the gas, water, and electricity?
Well, that will be, of course, that will go on there and be...
But is that already available?
It's right next to it. Won't take very much to get it there. We may actually help them a little bit with that, just to make sure that it's done correctly and there's no safety hazard.
That's fine. I just wondered if it would want to be located in the proximity of the utilities.
Any other questions?
No, but a quick statement. I'd like to do one of these nights a spotlight on what some of our horticulture program, what they do. I think you'd be fascinated if you hadn't visited some of those places. It is incredible.
Financial matters.
General Purpose School Budget Amendments. One, Jennings Jones Grant for Virtual Enterprise. This amendment budgets a 2009, 2010 grant of $20,000 from the Jennings and Rebecca Jones Foundation for the Virtual Enterprise Program, the $12,000 in the GPS fund balance that is left from the 2008, 2009 grant, and the related expenditures to help support the Virtual Enterprise Program. These funds will be used to build a stronger Virtual Enterprise International Network in Tennessee by providing professional development to facilitate student learning, and we're going to recommend that you do amend the $12,000, new money plus the $12,000 existing money for Virtual Enterprise.
Questions?
Two. Coordinated School Health. This amendment reallocates $2,300 in ERAC Coordinated School Health expenditures from 72120-499, other materials and supplies, to 72120-370 substitute teachers. These substitutes will cover classes while teachers get training from the Michigan model, which is a curriculum that will help be integrated into at least 16 of our schools this year, and we're recommending that you do approve the $2,300 in ERAC funds from health expenditures to substitute teachers.
Questions? Three.
Transfer for Temporary Funding of Federal Programs. On October the 15th, 2009, the Rutherford County School Board and County Commission approved a $1 million transfer resolution in order to loan up to $1 million from the general purpose school fund balance to the school system's federal projects fund in order to avoid temporary cash deficits in the federal projects fund. The $1 million transfer shall remain in the federal projects fund as a designated fund balance of the general purpose school fund and may be repaid at any time as noted in a resolution passed by the Board of Education and the County Commission. This amendment is a budgetary side of the resolution that was approved on October the 15th, 2009. The amendment decreases the GPS fund balance by $1 million and increases transfers to other funds by $1 million. And the motion is obviously to transfer that million from the GPS fund ballot to the federal projects fund.
Now, this is something that we've been doing anyway, that we...
Yeah, we just have to pay it back at some point, Jeff. Reimburse GPS.
Things I've been reading in the papers raise questions about the state's ability to fund the BEP for next year. Also raises questions as to whether or not revenues will be there to fund the BEP for the balance of this year. We've got to get through this year. Where are we going...if the state cannot fund, where are we going to get the funds if we don't have access to our reserves?
We hadn't talked a lot about...I mean, obviously, we know what's in store for us next year. We hadn't talked as much about the balance of this year, but we're obviously going to have to start thinking that through. Jeff, you want to comment?
I have had that concern throughout the year with this change in the way we have to hard book funding that cash shortfall, timing difference in federal funds. We really didn't have much of a choice on this. I think we've got to guard our fund balance, and as soon as we hear anything firm, that there might be this year, the '09, '10 BEP funding might be in danger, then we go into severe austerity mode. At this point, we haven't heard anything. There, I'm going to a conference in Memphis at the beginning of December, and that will be our opportunity. Actually, the reason two of us are going is because we will be able to talk to the state folks there, and maybe get some answers.
Don't like gloom and doom, but I do like being prepared, and I just think there's a mental process that we need to be going through now, preparing ourselves when and if we get to a shortfall era. And if...we don't wait till then, Jeff. We start kind of tightening down a little bit to the...
We, I mean, I would say that we've been extremely cautious about spending money, period, with the exception of, you know, salaries and...in other words, people out there in the front line know that it's a gloom and doom kind of year, and they're not asking for stuff they ordinarily might, and we're just trying to safeguard and try to build that fund balance as best we can. We know that we're in a danger zone.
Any other questions on that issue? Special education.
High-cost students. School system received an additional $19,709 from the state to partially reimburse us. to partially reimburse us for high-cost special education students that we educated last school year. This year's figure also includes some funds for high-cost preschool students. These funds must be amended into the current year's budget for special education expenditures. Spenders will be for special ed teacher pay and benefits in seventy-one, two-hundred special ed and seventy-three, four-hundred preschool. And we recommend that you amend fourteen thousand, eight-hundred and seventy-four dollars in IDEA revenues and the related expenditures for special ed teachers and amend four thousand, eight-hundred and thirty-five dollars of preschool revenue and the related expenditures for preschool teachers as presented.
Questions? Grant.
Other system getting some of these funds too? I mean, is it pretty much?
I'm sure if they've got, uh, uh...
It's based on fact that maybe we're having more?
Yeah, high, you know, high, high-risk special ed kids. High-cost special ed kids, they are. You know, so I'm sure it's based, it's based on the number of kids, the size of your system and those kind of deals.
So what makes them high-cost? Is it, I mean, I guess it varies, but physical?
They're a higher option, yeah. Like, for example, if we have Rutherford Academy, we put kids at Rutherford Academy. Well, it costs a lot of money to educate them at Rutherford County, Rutherford Academy. Or they have a severe disability that, uh, might require additional need or additional therapy or something like that. And they're, they're construed, I think it's an option seven-two-nine, uh, special ed kid, which means they have severe disabilities. It costs more to educate them.
Doc?
Question about special ed and five-oh-four. They're, they're completely different funding areas, right?
Yes.
If, if a child has five-oh-four, that's a temporary. Is that federally funded or is that?
Well, a five-oh-four, I, I guess a five-oh-four, no, it's not federally funded, but a five-oh-four wouldn't necessarily always be temporary, would it?
No, sir, it can be on.
Yeah.
We, we reevaluate every year. We meet on children that have five-oh-four status each year and determine eligibility. It's, it's a taking decision similar to an IEP rate.
But it, it's, it's an ongoing process of determining eligibility.
That's correct.
But occasionally, a five-oh-four wouldn't cost us any more money to implement, according to what the five-oh-four was, the severity of the five-oh-four.
It's been variable, maybe. It's a combination of five-oh-four and it needs accommodations and it's still not a replacement.
You wanna talk just real quickly what a five-oh-four is, Paul? Sure.
Five-oh-four is eligibility for students who have conditions that, that impact their learning, their, 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 it's, it's walking, uh, learning, uh, God, Angel.
Breathing.
Breathing, uh, any life, any life processes that they have. So right now, we have five-oh-four plans for students who are asthmatic or diabetic. And those are our most prevalent ones that we have. We have about, about, about one hundred students in our system who meet eligibility, meaning they need care, need someone to help care for them in those situations. Uh, you might also have temporary five-oh-four plans for a student who breaks a leg and has to be in a wheelchair and needs some accommodations to get around the building. And, and, but that would be a temporary situation. But most of them that we have are, are a life situation.
We got any employees that have five-oh-four?
Any employees?
Yeah.
We would have ADA plans, American with Disabilities Act plans on them. And right now, we do.
I know, okay.
So why would you do a five-oh-four instead of an IEP? Or would you do both in some circumstances?
We have what we call the SAT team process. And it's a, it's a group of, of employees that come together, including the parent, a counselor, a special ed teacher, a, a school psychologist, a administrator, classroom teacher. And you evaluate the needs of that individual child. And then going through that process, you determine if there's a learning concern, and it might go towards the special ed direction, or if it's a five-oh-four concern and it can be met with five-oh-four accommodations. Or there may be no eligibility and you just need to find accommodations in a classroom. You know, you might have to just continue to do some strategies to help that child.
Any other questions? Autism, one of these, one of the condition?
Could be, couldn't it? I don't think it falls.
That would fall under, under special education.
Yeah, not a five-oh-four.
Special education has certain categories with disabilities.
That could be a difference. IDA specifies particular disabilities may be eligible in special ed services. And so, you know, you have to sort of fit into those categories in terms of special ed. It's not exactly five-oh-four typically, it's related issues. That you're not following all of those categories.
And, and with five-oh-four, this condition has to severely impact a major life activity. And again, that major act, major life activity could be breathing in the case of an asthmatic. Or in the case of a diabetic, being able to care for oneself in the event of a, of a low blood sugar situation.
It's kinda safe to say it's, there's often a lot of confusion whether a person qualifies for five-oh-four services, not in there.
It is correct. And you have to really go through that process. And that's why we have these SAT meetings in the schools to take it through. All of the information we have, we gather all the data from the, from the parents, all the medical information that we can get. We have a nurse that sits on that five, on the, on the SAT meeting as well. And then from there, they determine which direction they need to go in order to assist that child. So that process has worked very well for us.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Uh, B, building program amendments.
Building programs amendment. Uh, one, project cleanup. The first of these building program amendments is a routine cleanup amendment that real allocates existing funds within the following projects. No new funds involved and no funds are being moved to another project. The amendment real allocates the following amounts. Rockville Middle, sixteen hundred dollars. Brown's Chapel Elementary, one million, four hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and five dollars. Christian Elementary renovation, forty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars. Whitworth Buchanan Middle, five million, nine hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Oakland Middle, three million, four hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars. For Brown's Chapel Elementary School, one million, four hundred and ten thousand. The amendment is separating the furniture, equipment, technology, et cetera, into the separate line items for these expenditures. Whitworth Buchanan Oakland Middle. The amendment separates architect fees, engineering fees and site development from the beginning approved construction line item. And we recommend that you amend as presented the following five, uh, building pro, program projects and amounts as I, as I referenced a second ago.
Any questions? Grant?
Are the reason you're doing this so you can get a better handle to compare projects? Or, I mean, to, for more consistency there?
We, we have moved, working with the County Commission, toward more starting with a total budget for each of our projects. And then as we go into the projects, we amend into the separate line items. And we have to ultimately report those separate line items.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Three, Oakland Middle and Whitworth?
Oakland Middle and Whitworth Buchanan Middle Schools furniture, fixture and equipment. This amendment moves two million, four hundred and twenty-five thousand in existing funding for the furniture, equipment, technology, phones and library book budget from construction. From the construction line for both Oakland Middle and Whitworth Buchanan Middle Schools where it was originally budgeted. The amounts are based on expenditures at the Rockville Middle School. Recommend that we amend two million, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on the construction budget for Oakland Middle and Whitworth to budget furniture, equipment, technology, phones, library books as presented.
Questions? Next.
Three. Oakland Middle and Whitworth Buchanan Middle Schools shortfall. This amendment asks the County Commission to transfer the three hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars in funds from the state, uh, from the sale of the excess girly property to the building program fund to help fund the middle school shortfall. It's one million, one hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars shortfall was caused by the changes Murfreesboro required when the school system applied for permits for the two middle schools. The amendment also transfers the a hundred and four thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars remaining in the Rockville Middle project, the twenty thousand, a hundred and ninety-three dollars remaining in the single high irrigation project, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, forty dollars remaining in the Brown's Chapel project, nineteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars remaining in the Christian Elementary renovation project, and four hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars in the future high school budget to fund the shortfall. And obviously, we're recommending that we do that. Uh, it's with, kinda sadness that we have to do this. Also, I might add that there was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in each school's contingency fund. That's pretty well dried up too, as a result of the permitting of these projects. Uh, but I think we all know the outcome if we don't, you know, if we don't fund the shortfall. So we're gonna recommend that we do that.
Questions? Grant?
Have, have we or can we reserve our rights, of course, our attorney's here, uh, to go back and, and try to pursue, uh, what we feel is injustice on those permits? And we talked about it a lot.
Once the permit fees are paid, they're paid. There's no, there's no right you have to get reimbursement for those. There really is no way you can go back and collect the permit fees after that.
Well, we can't pay under protest. Or can we?
We can pay them, it won't do you any good. It's not like taxes. Taxes, you can pay under protest and have a right to go back and fight for taxes. But not the permit fees.
This goes back to the cooperation issue again. When we were talking about cooperation a while ago with, with the schools, this is the same thing. And it's only on the other side. The city could cooperate a little better also.
You know, it's pretty interesting. I asked Mr. Clardy, like, for example, what is it that we, you know, an original engineer to the project, original design of the project, roadwork, irrigation, water lines, that we would've put in? Where did we fall short? Because that's where a great deal of the money is going to, that they, we didn't meet their codes, but yet it would've met T-dots, it would've met state codes and everything else, right? Uh, that said, and I don't want to put you too much on the spot, but talk about how, where that one point, three million dollars went to, or three point, one point four, one point five, whatever it eventually becomes.
There's a lot of things, uh, for instance, on turning lanes, uh, out at Buchanan. We had a T-dot in agreement on what we were to do and, uh, through the city's review. And, uh, and since that is in the city, uh, annex area, they had a different idea. So we had to end up adding, uh, more turning lane. Irrigation, uh, water lines, um, just an, you know, endless number of different things throughout.
So what do they require? What, what do you mean when you say water lines versus what?
Well, um, for instance, if, um, even though, um, consolidated, we could meet their requirements, we may not meet the city's requirement. So we'd have to upgrade those water lines because it's within the city limits to meet the, uh, requirement. And another thing that going through all of this, you end up in redesign phase so that the engineers and the architects workload is just increased severely. And of course, when you're used to doing a prototype where you have a three percent design fee, and they've designed to meet the state requirement, you, they end up doing all this extra work. You have to pay them for that extra work. So the design fees, everything goes up.
With a little cooperation, the city taxpayers would probably be paying less and the county taxpayers would be paying less too, if we could get together on some of these issues. It looks like to me, 'cause this is gonna, invariably gonna cost city people money too, because money comes around in a circle. It, it, you know, it's all money that's, that's paid in. And I, I think, you know, we should get, we, we, if they want cooperation from us, we should get cooperation from them. And I think we've tried our best to cooperate with them for the most part.
I'm not trying to put them down. I'm just saying, I think government entities should cooperate with each other to save money all the way around. And I think we could do that. Is that all I'm gonna say? Grant?
I'm gonna ask one, one more time. Is there any, uh, avenue that we can pursue to try to get this money back?
Once the money's paid, it's paid. You can't get it back. So nothing you can do to get it back.
I thought we could.
Well, you, you, can you file an action because of, uh, of, of the, uh, I think say indifference? I don't think that's the right word, 'cause it wasn't indifference. They obviously were active, uh, on other stretching. But i- is, is there anything that you, that you would have a basis for a lawsuit on that?
You know, if we had wanted to go to court at the time, you know, to protest the payment of those fees before we paid those fees, we could've gone to court at that point. But at point, the problem you had, you, the practical problem you have with that is a timing issue 'cause that holds up the rock, the project. It holds up the contractor and you got everything bid. It's, it could affect your bid prices and so forth. So it can have a cascading effect, which in the long run could potentially hurt you if you miss the bid prices that were initially quoted to you. Uh, 'cause subs, you know, material suppliers, all quote things, their quotes are so good.
Yeah, we talked about that this time. Yeah, we understand why we had to do it.
Yeah, so all that can impact it. But once, you know, so you can, you know, if you ever wanna go to, I mean, I'm game to go to court with the city on that issue 'cause I think we've got a pretty good case against the city, um, for payment of those fees whenever we decide we have time to do that. But we're always in such an urgent capacity, urgent need to get schools, schools built. We don't have the luxury of waiting. But, and then we have the, you know, the cost implications of losing your bid and losing your, um, construction subcontractors, materials, material suppliers and so forth. So, um, I think if we ever want to take them to court on it, I think we have a good case if we decide to go that route. If we get to a point that we have a project that's in the city, that we have time that we can wait on it, you know, I think it's a good time to go, go to court on it and get court to rule on it.
Bottom line, the money's gone and...
Once it's paid, I mean, there's no way to get, I mean, we paid it. Um, and courts are gonna say, you paid it, you waived your rights to protest it, it's paid.
Doc?
Dead horse.
I'm so, I'm sorry, man. I, I didn't know you weren't finished.
I just said beating a dead horse.
Oh, go ahead. Comment.
The very next agenda item offers us this opportunity. Yeah, the single high classroom addition. But there would be fees required or permits?
We, I don't think we've paid those before with addition.
We hadn't been permitting anything in the city, have we?
Right.
For all the last we're due.
We have. Remember, I brought the list to the board of, uh, everything that had been permitted with the permit number, uh, and I got those straight from the city.
What have we done in the city prior to the, these two middle schools?
Um...
I know on portables, they tried to hold us up on portables. We, we got through that somehow.
Well, we've, uh, we've gotten, we've bought permits through the portable because the city refused to give us a, or the mover, a permit to be on strict city streets if we didn't have a building permit. So we couldn't actually move the thing. Um, uh, we tried to get by at, uh, Oakland and Riverdale without them and, uh, without the basket fees and a lot of different things.
So we permitted Oakland and Riverdale?
I, I've got a question. It, to, to be fair to the city, I wanna be fair to them. Are any of these fees anything because of international laws? You know, I know cities come, some of their things that they're building has to come under an international thing that supersedes state and, and local. Or I've heard that. Uh, you know, any of that, those issues?
There's a move in the country to go to an international code which replaces the SBC and different things. And actually, most of the international code is less stringent than some of the existing code.
Yeah, but there's definitely, I mean, it's just money purely wasted. Like, we, we had to post a payment performance bond just to, to secure the fact that we're going to finish the job, which is completely, I mean, I don't know how much we paid several tens of thousands of dollars. That was completely wasted because that just goes to a third party, doesn't accomplish anything. Uh, and that's what you do when you don't have a solvent party there to be responsible and finish the job. But here you got a county en, entity, county's not going anywhere. We can't dissolve, we're, we can't disappear. So we're always here to make payment and make good on our obligations, yet they require a payment performance bond, which is, uh, I think the city legal department probably thought that was kind of unusual by the, that the city administration took that position, um, at, at the time. But that was the position the city administrator took at the time. And we got stuck paying it, uh, which is a complete waste of money, total, total.
Great.
What can we do to ensure a brighter future on these type of things? I mean, we, we need to, we need to get our position solid and, and have something in place to make, to move quickly for the decision to buy.
Yeah, you would hope you'd be able to sit down with the city and talk to some of the city administrators and discuss these, you know, um, issues and get them to, you know, I, I don't know, whether you do on a higher level with the, the Board of Education meets with the city council to discuss these issues and get a decision made at that point. made at that point, at that level? You know, I don't know. Could you have the city administrators, um, you know, with their own mind with respect to how some of these things are supposed to be managed?
Well, can you get a judge's opinion? What venue would this fall under if you had to, to apply for?
We got an opinion on it.
Yeah, well, we've gotten Tennessee attorney opinion, attorney general opinions before. So we've got that, those are opinions, they're not binding on the city. So they've been favorable to the county in the past and the city has not honored those. So, I mean, you, Bart, you know, sure to, you either meet with them or if you have one of these projects that you can go to court on, they try to, um, hold your feet to the fire about pulling a building permit, just say, go to court, ask the court for a declaratory judgment at that point. It's whether the city's, can require the county to, to obtain a building permit. You know, that's what the law is.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
If we won one of those cases, then in the future, after that, we would not be-
You would hope it would be better, you know, the city may say, well, it's different circumstances or, you know, so you've got that to wrestle through. So you have a lot of practical problems that come into the, the issue.
One final question. Cannot you file an action, uh, for future, uh, reference? And whereas go, have, get a judge to look at this and, and it would probably be fairly cost efficient as opposed to going other route because you'd have time-
Yeah, courts cannot look to speculative type cases. They'll say, we can't, you know, unless we have a hard concrete conflict here, actual, they won't, they won't hear a case.
Not even based on something that happened, that's, we got the factors that something happened previous?
So you have to have a controversy there at that time for the court to act on it.
Doris?
In 2012, we proposed to build an addition to Segal High School. This is a solid action. We'll, at some point, we'll have plans, we'll have needs. There you can go with your declaratory judgment action.
Yeah.
We just have to have a schedule that permits us to do it. I mean, that's the key to all of this is we have this desperate need for seats. Particularly in the middle, the case of the middle schools, we had no choice. The opening in 2012 was endangered. So maybe we have more flexibility on an addition and could take the time.
Well, the city has had a change in administrators, you know, since all this last school was built. And I don't know whether that would change their philosophy about how things could be done. You would hope maybe it would. So I don't know if it'd be productive to have a meeting with some of the city people now to discuss some of these issues. You would rather resolve it through that mechanism than going through court if you could. So it may have an opportunity to discuss that with, you know, the new city administrator and maybe they'll have a different attitude than they've had previously.
Thank you. See? Two-year building program shows revised opening dates, uh, Stewart's Creek High School, 2013. Eagleville School, 12. Classroom addition, 2012. We left off the auditorium and a big part of the addition because of the dollar amount and the fact it stayed to the economy. Single high school classroom addition, 2012. Addition to Bleacher, Laverne, Smyrna will be requested for the beginning of the 2011 school year. These changes have been made because of the economic situation. The county may not go to the bond market for additional construction funds until 2011. The Eagle project has been separated into a classroom addition project for 2012 and a core building facility project for a year later, recommended approved two-year building plan as presented.
Questions? Paul?
I can only speak for myself, but I still feel uncomfortable with naming the high school at this time. I think that discussion still led itself to question where that, what school would be the priority school. So I once again just question naming Stewart's Creek High School and not just a generic high
Comments, questions? Terry?
I mean, the only thing I can say is, I think, last month when we went over this thing, I think that's the way he wanted it put down there. I mean, I don't have a problem.
We felt like Stewart's Creek would help the most schools. That was the reason I think Mr. Gill wanted that to be put down there, but go ahead. I just thought the way we left it was we would just say high school and then because unfortunately we have more time to think of it, we'd give ourselves a little more flexibility if we left it that way.
Doris?
Comment was made about the three high schools and trying to look at zoning and see which zone would provide us with the best effort. And, and from there, we would decide which site, once we know the numbers that would go to Stewart's Creek, to Rockvale, to Buchanan. That, that's a lot of work, I know, but, and, and we can't be totally exact, but we could come to a reasonable, a number.
We're not far, we're not far away from this. I mean, we're, we're going to be at capacity at all, six of the four high schools, so, Stewart's Creek project seems to me to look like the one that's going to benefit the most schools and, and the most students. So I, I would, I would think we want to be on that page as quickly as possible because we are, we're approaching 2010 here, just a few weeks.
You know, it'd be great if the economy turned around and you could build two of them at the same time, but that doesn't-
We don't, we don't need two of them at the same time is the issue. I mean, you're talking about 105, 110 million dollars. We can't really fill two of them up. But at any rate, I mean, we can change it to high school and we'll go back and do our homework. And I think we can prove with relative uncertainty that Stewart's Creek is where it needs to go, but I'll be happy to do that.
Gill, uh, what would be a, I'd call a drop, drop dead date is when you would really have to decide, I mean, what would you say?
Uh, we've worked on that. Mr. Clardy, Ms. Sandvig, you know, when we'd have to seek initial funding and start designing all, I know we got all that stuff.
High school, Canterbury, about 10, we would need to have design.
Yeah, it's a year. It's a year off. So it's closer than, it's like Wayne said, it's closer than what you think it is.
Yep.
The very first thing we need to do, obviously, is a design. Is there any legwork in advance of that that we got to do, Jeff, funding wise or anything? We got to start lining up funding, Wayne.
They give us a year from now, and go, we have to start with that to get the funding.
A move we made with each of these proposed sites is that we prepared the slav. We're, that's a giant step in the, in the solving process, design process and everything else. So we made, we did good and we did that. And I, I think we've got, I, I would hope within the next six months, we could at least come together with some type of figure for these three areas and find out what student population would be, given that it wouldn't be 100% accurate, but enough to make the right decision.
Yeah. And I, you know, bottom line, we just need to start working on zoning a school at Rockvale and one at Stewart's Creek. I guess, I guess that's where, that's the issue.
Any other questions?
So just change the language on there to high school, okay, Ms. Michael? Uh, 12, there's several policies that we'll be discussing. I don't see a point in reading them tonight.
No.
We've already read them, but there's one on, uh, community use of school facilities. I'm sure there'll be some discussion. Another change in the grading system, if anybody wants to see, there's their online. Revision of policy 6.409, child abuse and neglect. Policy 5109, or 5.109, evaluation. Vacations and holidays. And then finally, an employee participation in recreational fitness activities. There's one other. Re revision of policy on attendance of non-resident students.
Any questions on those, any of those policies? Okay, 13.
Pursuit section 16.1 of the Rose County Board of Education bus contract. Transportation Department has received a letter dated November the 16th, 2009, from Robert Baltimore, contractor of bus 177, requesting voluntary termination of his contract. He further requests that the 60-day notice be waived. Uh, the Transportation Department is prepared to award this contract to the next potential contractor on the appropriate contractor list. And obviously, we'll recommend that we do that.
Questions? Any general discussion? Wayne?
The, uh, resolution that we presented before the TSBA passed, uh, the delegation 88%.
Will they present that to the state legislature?
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
I want to commend the board on how well they did yesterday in our little meeting. I think we did, did very well. Kept them a little longer than they wanted to stay. I think we shortened their lunch a little bit. I was pretty proud of the board, actually. And Doris, you came through, buddy. I got to tell you, 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 you did some study in there. You were ready to go. I think everybody did a good job.
Well, we know, uh, some-
Tomorrow, and that's something I might want to mention, uh, I don't think everybody has to be here tomorrow. Mr. Oldham said he didn't, with Don, did Don leave? He said he didn't think everybody had to be here tomorrow, but at 2:00, if you, if you want to be here, I think it'd be good. They make a report back to the system. I'll be here.
I thought their chair, or at least they, I inferred that she, she was looking for us to be here.
She was. I told her I hadn't approved that agenda. But I think Don said he didn't know that it was necessary. Did you hear him say that, Joyce, or? Yeah, maybe, Wayne?
They made a comment that they thought it was unusual that all board members were there for the interview.
Right.
Did I hear that correctly?
Yes.
We got Brownie's point on that.
I know some, some people have other, some other issues. Doris has some other issues that may prevent him from being here, and I don't know. Mark's probably at work and, and, uh, Grant's, I'm sure, at work. Well, Terry and I don't work.
You got that wrong.
I'm going to take half a day off tomorrow. I'm going to be here, and if, if some of the rest of you want to be here, I, I think it'd be very appropriate for you to be here. Is there anything else?